This conference will now be recorded.
Board of Supervisors virtual meeting. Before we do so, we have our legal representative here, Mrs. Powell, to give us our open statement in regards to our virtual meeting.
Good evening, all. This meeting is being held electronically due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which makes it unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. This meeting is being held by good meetings as posted on the county's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. At this time, we have with us, I'm assuming we have clergy personnel with us to lead us in our opening invocation. If so, at this time, could you please state who you are? I don't have that information and you may proceed. Apparently, we do not have someone on the line. So at this time, I would ask that we will prepare our hearts for our invocation. Let us pray. Most holy, wise and eternal Father, Lord, become humble before your throne of mercy and grace, seeking divine guidance and direction, Lord, as we are busy about our Father's business for our county called Suri. We ask that you would bless all that have come in virtually at this time. And Lord, I ask a special blessing upon the members of this board that we will make sound decisions for the citizens of Suri County. We ask that you would lead and guide and direct us and give us a mindset to follow you. And in doing so, Lord, we know that we will be held responsible and we will get good results, for you are the way, the truth, and the life. Bless us now with your presence and we shall be blessed indeed. It is in the name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. At this time, at this time, we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Calhoun if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Fellow board members, you have before you our agenda for this evening. And we trust and pray that you had an opportunity to view the agenda. And are there any questions on the agenda? If there be no questions, we would ask that Ms. Chapman will give us a roll call vote on the adoption of the agenda for this hour, August 6, 2020, meeting.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried for the adoption of the agenda. Now, the first item on the agenda is our consent items. We have on the consent items, our draft agenda minutes for July, and July the 2nd and July the 16th. Approval for our payables for the fiscal year, for the year 2019 through 20. We also have on the consent agenda, senior recognition resolution for Mr. Hardy. We're going to come back to that and we're going to actually have that resolution read. On the agenda also is surplus equipment sale order from the Sheriff's Department, our tasers, outdated tasers, and we have a grant and a resolution for declaration of our local emergency from our recent past tropical storm. At this time, before we approve and adopt the consent items, I'm going to ask Ms. Little if she would so graciously read for us the senior resolution for Mr. Thomas S. Hardy.
Just a moment, Chair. Let me find that resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Resolution 2020-15. At a virtual meeting held remotely by the Board of Supervisors as an effort to safely conduct business while maintaining the order of the Governor of Virginia to adhere to safe social distancing practices on Thursday, July the 2nd, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. And that should read August 6? Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Present the Honorable Robert Elliott Jr., thank you. Present the Honorable Robert Elliott Jr., Chair. The Honorable Michael Drury, Vice Chair. The Honorable Judy Little. The Honorable Kenneth R. Holmes. The Honorable Tim Calhoun. Resolution 2020-15, senior recognition. Oh, I have the wrong resolution. So that is my.
Yes, ma'am. It should be, it should be 16.
Some kind of way I got into the wrong minute.
No, no problem, Ms. Little. Would you, would you like for me to read it? I have it before me if you can't find it.
Yes, please do.
Okay. Again, as a resolution, present myself, Honorable Robert Elliott Jr., the Honorable Michael Drury, Vice Chair, the Honorable Judy Little, the Honorable Kenneth R. Holmes, and the Honorable Tim Calhoun. A resolution recognizing Thomas S. Hardy, whereas Mr. Hot, Mr. Thomas Spencer Hardy was born in Suri County, Virginia, on July the 11th, 1930, to Walter Hardy and Rebecca Bradley Hardy, and obtained the age of 19 years on July the 11th, 2020. And whereas Mr. Thomas Spencer Hardy has been married to his wife Gladys W. Hardy for 65 years, and together they have three children, Deborah Hardy Cotright, Fay Hardy Lucas, and Tanya Hardy. And whereas Mr. Thomas Spencer Hardy is a long-standing member of Gravel, First Gravel Little Baptist Church, where he served as a trustee for over 50 years and is now trustee emeritus. And whereas Mr. Thomas Spencer Hardy is a graduate of the Alloa White Training School and Norfolk Naval Shipyard Apprentice School, a Korean War veteran, a retired and retired from Norfolk Naval Shipyard in 1985 as a supervisory physical science technician, GS 12, with 34 years of service. And whereas Mr. Thomas Spencer Hardy worked extensively in mass voter registration, in the mass voter registration drive in the 1960s, which resulted in electing the first three African-Americans to the Suri County Board of Supervisors in 1971. Served on the Suri County Planning Commission for 24 years. Served for four-year, a four-year term on the Crater District Planning Commission. Served on the High, the Suri Highway Safety Commission. Served as president of the Suri Assembly for several years during the 1970s and 1980s. Served as chairman of the Board of Directors for the Suri Family Health Group and participated in the groundbreaking ceremony in 1980 for the Suri Family Health Center, which serves the county today as the health department and is presently a member of the Suri Democratic Party, Suri NAACP, and Distinguished Men's Club of Suri County. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of Suri County wishes to recognize this milestone in Mr. Thomas Spencer Hardy's life and the many contributions that he has made to help make Suri a better place for all citizens through his active participation in affairs of the county. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Suri County Board of Supervisors hereby extend its heartfelt appreciation for Mr. Thomas Spencer Hardy for his endeavors aimed at improving the quality of life for the citizens of the county and Mr. Thomas Spencer Hardy for having reached the 90th year of his life. And be it further resolved that the original of this resolution be delivered forthwith to Mr. Thomas Spencer Hardy and that a copy of it be spread upon the records of Suri County Board of Supervisors, attested to by our county administrator, Mrs. Melissa Rollins, and the Board of Supervisors. Having read the resolution for Mr. Hardy, is there a motion on the table to receive and accept our consent items?
Mister Chairman, I move that we would accept our consent items. And thank you for reading of the resolution and approval of our resolution.
Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, this is Ms. Rollins. Before you carry that motion, may I say that Mrs. Little's comments were not in vain in terms of the resolution that we need to approve to declare the local emergency and also to confirm ending the emergency. I just want to make note that she was correct in making sure that we provided an ending date of August 6, 2020.
Yes. Thank you, thank you for that clarification. That is, that is a part of our consent item.
Thank you.
Reverend Elliott, I second.
Is there a motion?
Second it, Reverend Elliott.
It has been probably, yes, sir. It has been probably moved a second that the consent items will be approved. Is there any other discussion on the floor on the consent items? If not, can we have a roll call vote for the acceptance of the consent items for our August 6, 2020, meeting?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you. We now will move into new business and I'm going to give way now to our county administrator, for she has the detailed presenters who will be giving us our new business. So at this time, I'll call on Ms. Rollins.
Okay. Good evening, Mister Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors and all who assembled virtually this evening. The first item underneath new business is a request for supplemental funding for the Suri County Public Library, the Blackwater Library, Suri Branch. As you all are aware, the Blackwater Regional Library funding cuts resulted in adjustment to the hours at the staffing level at the Suri Branch. These hours were effective July 1st, 2020. We did receive a request to provide support for additional funding to restore the library to their hours prior to July 1st, which also means restoring one part-time position that was lost as a result of the funding cut. You do have the hours before you in your agenda material as to hours before the cuts and the hours that are current as a result of the cuts. If the Board of Supervisors is so willing this evening to appropriate an additional $11,250 to the Blackwater Regional Library, the library will have its hours restored to those hours prior to July 1st, 2020. Again, the budgetary impact is $11,250. If the Board does approve this this evening, it means that the Blackwater Regional Library request that they presented to the county will be fully funded. Well, almost fully funded, because this amount that we're approving would be effective August 9th instead of July 1st. But the amount total to the library will be $171,256.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Members of the board, you've heard the presentation on the Suri Branch of the Blackwater Library. Can we get a motion on the table for our discussion?
Chairman Elliott, this is Tim Calhoun. I'd like to make the motion to approve the funding request.
We have a, have a motion on the floor to approve the funding request for an additional $11,250 for the library services of Suri. Can we get a second on that?
A second on that?
It has been probably moved a second that we would fund the library, Suri Branch Library, Blackwater Library, with additional funds of $11,000, excuse me, $11,250. Are there any, any discussion or questions from board? If there are no questions or discussion, can we have a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman, on this motion?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury.
Yes.
Mrs. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item, number two, new business.
Yes. The next item on the new business is a real estate certification request, a refund payment of real estate taxes. This is an item, and I'm going to ask Ms. Powell if she can briefly go over the certification request this evening for Swan's Point.
Sure. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. Before you is the certification, as Ms. Rollins so noted. It is a certification to refund $18,000 for the past three tax years of '18, '17, and '16 for tax parcel number 14-11, '15-1, and '15-3, which is a result of a consent order that was signed by the Circuit Court Judge as of July 1, 2020. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have as relates to this refund.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Are there any questions from the members of the board of Ms. Powell on this request for a refund? If there be no questions, can we get a motion on the table for consideration?
So moved, Mr. Chairman Elliott. Chairman Elliott, excuse me.
Yes, Miss.
I, I failed to hit my mute button. I apologize. Ms. Powell, can, do we know if there's any outstanding taxes that is due by, that's due, that would go against that refund?
Yes, Mr. Calhoun, there are some penalties and interest that are owed by the taxpayer. And so they have agreed that they will, or that we will be able to deduct the penalty and interest from the total amount that's owed.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Are there any other questions or discussion? If not, can we get a motion on the table?
So moved, Mister Chair.
We have a motion on the, on the table for refund of tax purposes at Swan's Point for $18,000. Could we get a second?
Second. Judy Little.
It has been probably moving, it has been probably moving second. Are there any other discussions or questions on this matter? If there be none, Ms. Chapman, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Third item on the new business, HRSD Industrial Pump Station Boundary Line Adjustment.
Yes, sir. And we're going to ask Mr. William Sanders, Director of Planning and Community Development, to present this item to the board this evening.
Good evening, Mister Chairman and members of the board. This is in reference to the HRSD Industrial Park Pump Station Boundary Line Adjustment, dedication of public property. As part of the Hampton Roads Sanitation District's Acquisition and Repatriation Project of the sanitary sewer in Suri County, the pump station facility located in the Suri West Business Park requires expansion. Currently, HRSD owns a .230 acre parcel in the park, parcel 40-1A. They are requesting the Board of Supervisors consider the dedication of .802 acres of their adjacent parcel 40-1 by boundary line adjustment to accommodate the necessary expansion. You'll find enclosed in your packet a boundary line adjustment plaque dated June 15th, 2020, deed for your consideration. There may be someone from HRSD on the call if you want to hear anything from them or if you have any technical questions about this.
Do we have any representatives from HRSD at this time? If, if not, fellow board members, I'm looking at the plaque at this time. Do we have any discussions or questions of Mr. Sanders in reference to this? If not, what's before us is a dedication of 8.02 acres for public property. Do we have a motion on the floor, on the table for consideration?
Excuse me, Mister Chairman. It is, it is .802. It's less than an acre.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Sanders.
Yes, sir.
.802 acres. Thank you, sir. Can we have a motion on the table for considerations?
Mister Chairman, I so move that we would grant the request for HRSD for the .8 acres.
Have a motion on the floor. We have a second?
I have a second.
It has been probably moved a second that we would dedicate the .802 acres for public property for HRSD. Are there any further discussions on this item? There'll be no further discussion. Ms. Chapman, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Elliott, roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. The next item is a request for public hearing on the comprehensive plan update.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Yeah, please go back to Mr. Sanders.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening. This is in regard to the comprehensive plan update, a request for a public hearing. After a long process that was spearheaded by the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, specifically Matt Smith, the plan has worked its way through the planning commission. At their July 27th, 2020, meeting, they did recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors on the final draft that they reviewed at that time. So tonight, we request approval to advertise for a public hearing on the comprehensive plan update for the September 3rd, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting.
Thank you, Mister Sanders. Board members, you've heard the request for a public hearing on the comprehensive plan for our September meeting. Are there any questions or discussions on this matter from Mr. Sanders? If not, can we have a motion on the table for consideration?
Mister Chairman, I move that we would have the public hearing for the comprehensive plan update at our next meeting, well, the meeting in September.
I have a motion on. It has been probably moved a second. There'll be no further discussion on this. The motion is on the floor for, for the public hearing on our September the 3rd meeting. Can we have a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda for new business is the adoption of Suri County Families First Corona Response Act. I believe, Ms. Rollins.
Yes, sir. And also the teleworking policy. Back in March of 2020, the United States Senate passed, and the President did sign off on the Family First Corona Response Act. This act was effective on April 1st, 2020, and it provides benefits for employees and families directly affected by the COVID-19 pandemic through December 31st, 2020. The act amends the current FMLA with the Emergency Family Medical Leave Expansion Act and also provides additional paid leave, sick leave through the Emergency Paid Leave Act. As a public sector employee, the county is thoroughly subject to these provisions. Underneath the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act, an employee qualifies for paid leave if the employee is unable to work and unable to telework due to a need for a leave of absence because of various circumstances associated with COVID-19. And those particular circumstances are listed in your cover sheet and I would not go over those this evening unless you have any specific questions. What we're asking you all to do this evening is to adopt the Suri County Family First Coronavirus Response Act policy, which will be retroactive to April 1st, 2020, as well as the county's tempo work teleworking policy, which also is retroactive to March 16th. As you all are aware, during the course of the pandemic, things were moving very, very fast and localities were pushed with several different policies that needed to have the county's attention. This is coming before you in August. So my personal apologies for the lateness in getting it to you. But we do want to bring it forth, because we want to make sure that all employees know that these provisions are in place, even though we have already provided them with the standard language prior to this meeting. And we're just asking for the official adoption on this evening.
Fellow board members, you've heard the request for the adoption of the Suri County Families First Coronavirus Response Act and the teleworking policy. Are there any questions on this item for Ms. Rollins? If there be no questions, could we have a motion on the table for consideration?
Kenneth Holmes, motion to consider.
We have a motion for the adoption of the Suri County Family First Corona Response Act and the teleworking policy. Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Mike Gray, second.
It has been probably moved a second that we would adopt the Suri County Families First Corona Response Act and our policy on our teleworking policy. If there are no, no additional discussions on this from the board, we would ask that Ms. Chapman give us a roll call vote.
Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yes.
Motion is carried and approved. Thank you. Item number six, budget request from Suri County Public Schools, of Mrs. Rollins.
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask Ms. Wendell to go with this item. But before she does do that, I do want to state that the, I appreciate the policy that was just passed, but I just want the board to be aware that as COVID-19 is still a, is something that we're dealing with still day by day, that this is a temporary telecommunications policy and is a possibility that prior to the end of the pandemic, that we may have to come back with some adjustments to that policy. I just want to make a note of that. The, again, the Suri County Public School budget request, this is an item that you did not have a cover sheet for. It could have been something that we could have taken care of internally, but it is on the agenda. So I'm going to ask Ms. Wendell if she just can give just a brief highlight of the request that came from Suri County Public Schools.
Good evening. The school board is requesting that the Board of Supervisors approve the transfer of 55 five thousand dollars from their administration and health category to the people transportation category. The schools incurred additional costs related to people transportation, most notably with costs for special education students. And this is an item that the schools typically come forward with at the end of the year, where they've had some unexpected expenditures in one category that can be covered by a transfer from another category. So the staff recommends approval of the transfer, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Swindell, could you tell us once again, what are the categories is going to be transferred from and, and what is it going to be transferred to?
Yes, sir. The, the schools would like to transfer fifty five thousand dollars from their administration and health category to their people transportation category, which includes the cost of busing students and vehicle maintenance.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this transfer from fellow board members? If not, could we have a motion on the, yes?
I'm sorry, this is Tim.
Yes, Ms. Calvin.
Mrs. Swindell said that they, they tend to move money towards the end of the year, and I, and I understand that with budgets, but I'm wondering if we, if they have made note of this for, in their most recent budget for the upcoming budget year. If their, if their, if their transportation costs, people transportation costs is increased by fifty five thousand dollars, I would hope that they would consider that in their, the new budget, twenty 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 one, physical year.
Thank you, Ms. Calvin, for your concern. We can definitely pass that information on to them. Is, are there any other points of discussion? If not, could we get a motion on the table for consideration for the transferring of fifty five thousand dollars from administrative and health to people transportation department in our public schools?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Can we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
It has been properly moved a second. At this time, we have a roll call vote from Mrs. Chapman.
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yes.
Motion is carried, thank you. Our last item under new business is the CARES Act funding update, Mrs. Rollins.
Yes. To give you an update this evening on the CARES Act funding, on July the twenty eighth, Governor Northern did announce that the Commonwealth will distribute to local government an additional six hundred and forty four point six million dollars in federal coronavirus relief funds pursuant to the federal act, which is the CARES Act. For Suri County, this means a distribution in amounts of five hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and forty five dollars. In order for the county to receive these funds, the states are requiring localities to submit a new certification form, and also to respond to an online survey regarding the use of these funds by Monday, August the tenth, so that the state may provide a report on the use of the CARES funds by locality to the General Assembly when it convenes for a special session on August the eighteenth. As you have may have been aware in previous meetings, county staff has discussed several potential uses of the CARES Act funding to, that we received in the first round. I believe we received those funds the first of June. I did want to provide for your information this evening, a estimated breakdown by category of some of the potential uses that staff continues to identify as the most favorable use of these funds. Want to make note that of the amount that the county did receive, that for eligible uses associated with the towns in the county, which includes all of our towns, sixty nine thousand nine hundred, excuse me, sixty nine thousand eight hundred and eighty four dollars or roughly twelve percent of these funds is the equitable share of the funds to the towns within the county. Staff, of course, will have to further discuss with the town representatives to identify these eligible activities associated with the impact of COVID nineteen. The use of CARES Act, as we have stated before, does require a documented eligibility and accountability by the county, so it's important that the towns do understand these requirements. And I will also add, at some point, we will get to having to first money to the town, likely on a reimbursement basis, will be required to sign a certification, understanding the requirements of the CARES Act funding. So again, you have the distribution below. It shows again for the first round, five hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and ninety five dollars. This is just a general breakdown, obviously, as we continue to navigate through the uses of the CARE. This may change, especially as we're trying to still figure out the best way to use the second round of funding that we receive, but just to give the board and those people a specific breakdown, for economic development purposes, we have a hundred thousand dollars or eighteen percent of the funding. Again, round two, financial assistance to county businesses have been negatively impacted by the virus. Some of the ideas that have been tossed around is a local restaurant voucher program, staff support for business resiliency, whereby we are making sure that businesses are able to have the proper seating and things of that nature. COVID nineteen relief packages for businesses to include items such as sanitizer, masks, marketing materials, disinfectants, thermometers, or any other items that we see fit for a relief package for PPE to businesses. The second category, public safety, public safety, health and welfare, about twenty percent, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Again, PPE supplies for county staff. When we have visitors and we have citizens visiting our facility to be protected. Of course, we have already spent some funding in terms of distracting our county offices, including fogging equipment and supplies. A use that we see widely is retrofitting of offices that are open to the public to provide appropriate separation to protect against the virus, as the plexiglass furnishings and other barriers. Redesigning of our interest at the government center is another potential use for security and protective provision. What we have now is a temporary setup, and we do buy something on a more permanent basis to make sure that we have that single point of entry as safe as we can, as we can mitigate the spread of the virus. Of course, social distancing, precautions, and in terms of a, of a shelter, we are in the midst of hurricane season, and this is something that the Hampton Roads region at least has been discussing over the last couple of weeks in terms of how do you prepare your emergency shelter in the midst of COVID. So of course, this is a challenging time, but again, there are some options to be able to use some CARES Act funding to address emergency preparedness at our, at our shelters. Food distribution is also something that has been listed, thirty thousand dollars. Some examples include the mobile farmer's market operations, a grocery basket delivery program that was brought up by our extension agent, hot meal preparation, this was already done by social services, but that program ended when the funding ended, so there's opportunity to continue if that is needed. And of course, other incentives to address food security, insecurity for Suri, to address food security for Suri residents. So there is options to address grocery needs in the county with CARES Act funding. Information technology, certainly a huge task in terms of how do we stay connected as a community in the time of COVID. Obviously, we do know that broadband is on his way in terms of our partnership with Prince George Electric. However, we have needs as that project does take time, understand, you know, funding and the support of Wi-Fi hotspots for Suri County school students to be able to do remote learning during pushdowns. Other community broadband needs due to COVID impact, full scope telework stacking. Mr. Brown has been proactive in thought process in terms of how do we continue for adequate telework environments, continue to raffle through the COVID virus, professional contracted services that may be needed, part-time wages, data protection and backup is certainly important, and of course, modernization is a huge one of the county's current legacy of financial support system, because in order for us to continue operation, that is exactly something that we have to make sure that we are able to function. And I only can add one to that, that we are currently operating on a operating system that was put in this county in nineteen ninety nine. Okay. All right. Public information is also a huge one, twenty thousand dollars estimated cost there, informational mailings and flyers to the community for outreach, mass notifications. Digital signage is a huge one in terms of having something outside of facilities, a kind of announced open enclosures, and anything that we would like our citizens to be aware of as relate to COVID nineteen. A kiosk for material and access to information to avoid public entering, and I know I'm taking a little bit of time to go through this, but I, I do know that this is something that we were asked to make sure that we shared this information. County response, fifty thousand dollars in terms of county response, personnel calls for county staff who were directly involved with COVID nineteen response, cost share for remote, for remote jury trials, as required by the Supreme Court. And basically, we did learn from the sheriff, and we learned from others that our sheriff is going to be required to supply deputies, as we're going to be having a off-site location to conduct a jury trials, which is going to be held in Hopewell, it could be in theater, so that's going to be a cost share amongst the localities in the six judicial district. County assistance programs for vulnerable citizens is certainly an impactful way to use CARES Act funding, and of course, we have received a couple of requests from agencies to support eligible use for Suri citizens as well. And of course, as I stated earlier, this pandemic is still among us, and we do not know exactly how all we may be able to use the funds, so we just put in a portion but undesigned it until such time we're able to determine the uses, because this spending period actually is to December twenty twenty, December thirty first. Now again, this is just, you know, ideas regarding the first round. If we think about the second round of COVID, obviously, localities all over the state and probably other states as well are raffling with how to be able to spend the funds. There is opportunities there. I had a long conversation with Dr. Sims, the school system, so even though you do not see the school system specifically listed, there is also opportunity to be able to provide some assistance in that area. Again, broadband technology, I can say that COVID requires, and I tell team this all the time, and others have stated as well, requires creativity, and this is something that we definitely understand that we have to do to be able to make impactful community ways that we are actually using this fund. So what we're asking for the Board of Supervisors to do this evening is to just give us some general consensus from yourselves on the plan, use of the CARES Act funding. We do need to go ahead and complete that certification, so if it's the board's will, just authorize the mission of a certification or receipt for the CR, Coronavirus Relief payments that we are slated to get sometime in August. The survey that we have to complete on August the tenth, we will certainly do that in talking with other localities. It is a, still a fluid document, nobody knows exactly all that they will do, but everybody knows that this is something that's moving very fast and that we're going to be responsive as requested. So I would be more than happy to answer any questions. Ms. Swindell is on. We have put together team members in the county who we've been discussing the uses, and we will continue those discussions as we continue to make plans for the use of the funds.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for our update on the CARES, CARES Acting Fund. This detailed and comprehensive update that you've given us. Board members, do you have any questions or comments to address to Mrs. Rollins in reference to the CARES Act funding at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Ms. Rollins. As we know, our Suri Health Department was temporarily combined, or all of our citizens have to go to Hopewell. I don't know if that's been an inconvenience or been an okay situation, but can we have that returned to Suri, and do we have the capability of getting testing equipment or the testing that we need? Is that something that can be included in our CARES Act funding, or is it something that we may look forward to between then, maybe December? The distribution of, did you say we were, I know we've given out some food, how is that going with the community as far as citizens requesting food, or nobody's requested, or how, how are we handling that?
Okay, so I'm going to tackle your first question as pertains to the Health Department. So you are correct, Mrs. Little, in that they were just hit so much limited staffing and had to really get a central location, from what I understand, to handle the COVID nineteen, that they did close down the Suri Health Department. But from what I understand, it has resumed for some days. It may not be fully off, and I have to look into that too, to get the exact date, but I do want to say that some days they are open. So they have returned some services to the county, okay.
Thank you for that.
As far as testing, you're absolutely correct. There is definitely a use in terms of the survey, some additional items that were listed that we were responding to in the survey, list COVID testing as one of the eligible uses, and whether or not we will have to dedicate funds to that, I'm certainly sure that's on the table. In addition to contract tracing, that was another one, so absolutely, I would think that if there's a way that we feel that we need to set that funds for those initiatives, that we will be able to do so. In terms of addressing your last question, as far as how are things going with food distribution in the county, that is something, at least I'm aware of this point, that our Department of Social Services is still providing food to our vulnerable population in terms of the meals program they have with that. As you're aware, the school system have been feeding residents, excuse me, have been feeding students since school systems have been closed, and Dr. Sims and her team are certainly up on the, the ways in which they can continue to provide meals to the students, even during the virtual learning that they're going to be doing the first nine weeks, and I was going to touch upon that a little bit later in the report. Earlier, I mentioned the word impactful uses of the CARES funds. So in terms of the things you just mentioned, in terms of providing food to the residents of the county, is not just those who are considered to be vulnerable or senior citizens. We want to be able to come up with a, a, a use whereby any citizen who needs to provide, who needs to get food, groceries in the county can do that without having to go outside, where you, of course, have a greater risk of contracting the virus. It would be better if you were actually had that amended in the county. So we are looking at those creative ideas whereby we can, again, trust food security for all of Suri residents.
Thank you, that's a great idea. I like that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Chairman, Tim Calhoun.
Yes, Ms. Calvin.
I'm sorry. I have two questions, if I may, for Ms. Rollins. Ms. Rollins, can you kind of, I, I don't think I caught totally what you expressed regarding, under the counter response, the second bullet says, "Cost share for remote jury trials required by Supreme Court of Virginia." Can you expound on that just a little bit, so I can get a better understanding, please?
Yes, sir. The Supreme Court, the six judicial district, Suri jury trials would not be held in Suri County. They are trying to limit the areas in which they will be having those trials. Suri County trials will be held at the Beacon Theater in Hopewell, Virginia. All the localities in the six judicial district are going to be asked to provide some cost sharing for the deputies who will have to do security, perhaps for maybe any additional personal protective equipment that may be required. If Sheriff Turner's on the call, he may be, maybe, may be able to add more information, but that's what that is, sir. We're, let me put it this way, the Supreme Court and the six judicial district understands that localities do have CARES Monday, CARES funding to be able to help mitigate the spread of the virus, and by us having to centralize those jury trials, they're just asking the localities to contribute.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my second question, we, I hear the mention of round two of the CARES And then my second question, we, I hear the mention of round two of the CARES grant. Is there any date of expectation about, do you know?
Yes, sir. I want to say that funding will be coming right, probably after we submit the certification. And the certification, you know, can be submitted as early as tomorrow and that survey again is due August the tenth. So if I want to understand that round two will come to us fairly quickly.
And will that be the same amount or?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm sorry, the exact same amount, five sixty, two forty-five, if that's the right amount.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions in reference to Mrs. So, Mrs. Rollins, you're asking the board now to authorize the certification?
Yes, sir.
Board members, I'm looking at the certification document at this time. Could we have a motion on the table for consideration for the authorization of the certification for the coronavirus relief fund payments?
Chair Mike Gray, so moved.
It has been properly moved. Can we have a second?
Chair, this is Tim Calhoun, second.
It has been properly moved and second that we would give authorization for the certification of the CARES Act. Are there any other further discussion on this motion? If not, Mrs. Chapman, could you give us a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
The motion is carried for the authorization of the certification of the CARES Act. We move now to unfinished business. The Suri County Board of Supervisors and the Economic Development Authority of Suri County, our MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding. Will that be coming from you, Ms. Rollins?
I would yield first to Mr. Jury or Mrs. Little if they want to present the item, sir.
That'll be fine.
You get first.
Mr. Jury, I yield to Mr. Jury.
All right. Vice Chair.
And I'm going to yield to Ms. Rollins.
Okay. Here it goes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I got a whole lot of yielding going on right here.
You know, I hope yielding means consensus, right? So you do have, you do have it for you this evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and I'm sure there's probably members of the Suri County Economic Development Authority on the call. But if you do recall, in your July meeting, it was a recommendation that members of the Board of Supervisors and those members being Mr. Jury and Mrs. Little do meet with the executive team of the Economic Development Authority consisting of Mr. Chandler and Mrs. Joyce Henderson to discuss the MOU that has been in discussion over the last couple of months or so. Staff did participate in those calls and I'm pleased to say that we have come to the consensus on a memorandum of understanding that we have shared also with our attorneys on the call and they did not provide any corrections to the final draft that was prepared based on the conversations between the two boards. So one of the changes that we identified primarily, and I will point that out, is that the Code of Ethics in which the Suri County Board of Supervisors did develop and approve, I believe, back in February, that that should be integral component of the MOU in which all EDA members would be required to sign in addition to the MOU. So again, I do want to say, working with Mr. Chandler and Ms. Henderson and Mrs. Little and Mr. Jury and myself and the staff input that our board is pleased on your side with other members that we was able to finally get to an agreement and we will move on from here with the spirit of collaboration as it was intended to be.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, and I think the board members, Mr. Calhoun, excuse me, Mr. Jury and Ms. Little and the members of the EDA for working so diligently to put this together for us to adopt on tonight. We have already adopted and approved the Code of Ethics. It's going to be a part of this agreement. So at this time, could we get a motion on the table for consideration for the official adoption of the MOU between the Suri County Board of Supervisors and the EDA?
Mr. Chair Mike Gray, so moved.
Have a motion. Can we have a second?
Chairman, you can do that. Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Calhoun, I mean, Mr. Calhoun, was it?
Holmes.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. Holmes, okay, Ms. Holmes, go right here.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second that we would adopt the MOU between the Board of Supervisors of Suri County and the EDA, but there are no further discussion on this matter. Could we have a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work. Put that one to bed. All right. At this time, we will have a financial advisement, a report from Mrs. Carol Swindell.
Good evening. Davenport LLC, Davenport Company LLC is the county's financial advisor and we've asked them to make a presentation to the board tonight. There's no action that's required from the board at this time. We are presenting this information for your information and background as we move into identifying ways that we can finance and fund the city's long-term capital improvement plan. And with that, I will introduce David Rose and Kyle Lauts, who are with Davenport, and they're going to make a presentation to you.
Thank you, Ms. Swindell.
Thank you, Carol. This is David Rose and I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, the opportunity that is being given us tonight. We are going to try to move quickly through this information, but we would encourage you, if you would like to just stop us. Kyle and I have been together now for about seventeen years. He looks a lot younger than that, but I can assure you, he came to us after college as opposed to after grade school because he, again, I wish I was looking like that. I have good fortune of working with both Melissa and with Carol previously. And again, I managed our department and I've been doing this now for a little over forty years. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm sorry we're not there tonight. I will stop for a second. I don't know if anybody jumped in.
And Melissa, can you see our screen just to kind of check our technology setup here? We would love to obviously be with you, but that's just not the case in this COVID environment to make sure everybody can hear us and maybe see the screen and the presentation.
Yes, we can see your screen. Yes, and yes, Mr. Holmes, you are the presenters this evening.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. If we could, I would just ask whoever's doing it to move us on to page two, our goals and objectives. Again, we want to introduce ourselves very quickly to you all. At the same time, we'd like to provide you with an overview of the county's finances. I will tell you right of front that you appear to be in a solid shape, well-run, and we are impressed by all that. We also know that there are a variety of challenges out there and again, you are in somewhat of a unique position. We'll talk about all that. So as Carol indicated, we're going to talk a little bit about some funding strategies for your approved capital improvement projects. And we're also going to address what we call long-term sustainability. What we think about, what I think about, is the fact that the county has been, like a number of other counties and cities throughout the state, blessed by having such a substantial partner in Dominion. But at the same time, we also know that that over time has fluctuations, volatility, and so we'd like to try to put you in the best possible shape to weather that, no pun intended. Then also, some good news here, because interest rates are so favorable, we're going to talk about an opportunity to simply save money for the county, not extending any interest rates, just simply to save some money. And then we'd like to give you, Mr. Chairman and others, a timetable for action. So if we could, just reiterate, our emphasis tonight is just on education, trying to answer questions, clarify some things, and if we don't have answers, we certainly will work hard to get them and come back to you going through Ms. Rollins and Carol. Okay, a little bit about us, if you would. We have been around for about a hundred and sixty years. We have a little over four hundred employees. We're here from Richmond. That's our headquarters, headquarters, and we basically cover from Maryland down to Georgia. And our overall annual revenues are just a little under two hundred million. So we are a sizable firm, but at the same time, we're all employee-owned and so again, we have an absolute stake in what we do. Next page, while we are focused in this region, we have almost five hundred clients now and we serve basically, while mostly they're in five state regions, we're in fifteen different states at this point. Next page, we have some rankings. We're proud of the fact that we've been very high up top of the Mid-Atlantic Southeast. And then the next page, you can see that in the green, the folks that we've had good fortune of working with. And you'll go to the next page and you'll see that as indicated, have good fortune of working with all of your neighbors in the role that we are now talking about with you and really feel blessed with that. Next page, let's talk about you now, now that the story's over. Let's go to the next page, if you would. Some of our key observations. As I indicated before, Mr. Chairman, you run a well-run house, if you would, and you have produced basically surpluses year in, year out, solid reserve levels, and you've been able to cash fund portions of your capital program, all of which we view as very, very good. At the same time, as I mentioned, you've had Suri's, the power station's been there for about forty years and we understand what it's got going forward, but it also, and that third bullet point, makes up at least forty-five percent of your public service corporation taxes, meaning it is a large percentage of the overall budget. You all know that. And so for us, we see that similarities in places like Charles City County, which we work, and Wise County, where the Dominion Virginia Power Plant is, in Covington, where the old Mead West Jaco was there. So in all of those instances, we've been working with them, try to not necessarily wean ourselves off of that by any means, but to be in a mode that if the day comes when they are not as prominent, we are in better position to absorb that unfriendly undesirable situation. Finally, we also know here that because of the plant and what it does, it skews your assessed value mean, and that, of course, hurts your funding for schools from the state. It, again, it is a double-edged sword. And so one of the things we realize is, in looking at sustainability, one of the things that we've seen with Melissa, we're excited about, is that she is very economic development-focused and she and Carol also have the abilities and the history of that multi-year financial and capital plan. And I think that's part of why we are here and want to just start dialogue tonight. Just a little bit, maybe, Kyle, why don't you talk for a little bit? Just give them some of the things we're seeing. We're going to go page by page quickly and I'll jump back in in a minute.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we'll just give you a couple pages of background. It won't take long, but just wanted to give you this sense as we look at it as effective outsiders, although certainly we know the neighborhood very well. So your real estate tax rate, it's maybe first and foremost, as you're thinking about the budget, et cetera, you're very competitive relative to your peers and that's what we're showing you here, literally second lowest amongst your peer counties right in the neighborhood. The next page, just a little bit of history of that real estate tax rate. We'll talk at the end about why we're talking about this now, but just wanted to paint a little picture of where you've been. It's been a very, in terms of that tax rate, and two pennies in fiscal year twenty sixteen. It's been very steady. Next page here, the assessed value. So as you all know, it's the primary and largest revenue driver for the county. The majority of your assessed value is indeed tied up in the power plant. And so we've shown you here is just a little bit of a history of your total assessed value and this does include the plant as well. So it's a very significant portion of your three billion dollar total assessed value. Seen that growth from two thousand and nine to twenty nineteen. And then we'll show you that comparatives on the right-hand side of the page, just relative to other counties across the country in Virginia. So we'll show you what that looks like on the next page. On this next page, we're showing you the assessed value. And so what this is telling us, telling David and I and even outside institutions that'll be looking at the county at some point, is how much assessed value is there to support your population or in essence, to support your per capita, just as it says right there. And what you have in Suri by virtue of the fact you have the power plant there, it's very, very high assessed value per capita. If you see it on the right-hand side of the page, there's a graphic there where Suri County is four hundred and fifty-one. And even if you look at larger counties that are rated AAA, which you see just below that, the median assessed value per capita for AAA county in Virginia is a hundred and fifty-five. So you are several fold above that. Again, virtue of the fact you've got the power plant there. So it's a good situation, but also one that is very unique, as it's in most other counties across the state and across the region. This next page, again, a little bit of background and we'll start talking about what thoughts we have for the future are. But David mentioned at the outset, you have a history, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, of running a good financial shop, at least in our opinion as outsiders. And so all this page is showing is right out of your audit, the general fund revenues versus expenditures. What we see out of that, four out of the last five years, you ran a surplus. That is certainly a positive in terms of running a tight shift, so to speak, from a financial perspective, having structurally balanced budgets where you have revenues that are more than sufficient to cover the expenditures. And the other piece in this is you do and have done historically a nice job of hack for capital. And so that all this background is useful at least for us and hopefully a little bit of perspective for you. But I think what we realize between David and myself, working as long as we have with Melissa and Carol, is that we have challenges going forward, just like any other local government, and COVID is only going to exacerbate those in the short run. And so what we really want to talk about and think about is how we do that planning for the future to make sure that you're as well-run in the future as you are historically.
And I would add one more point to everyone, and that is that we still don't have the final information on the six thirty of twenty, meaning fiscal year twenty, which just ended which just ended basically four and a half weeks ago. That's very typical. We don't expect to have it yet, of course. But that will also be helpful to us to see how the county weathered, if you would, the last three months or so of the fiscal year going into fiscal year 21. So that's going to be helpful. We still don't know that. And if you'll ever let us back, we'll be able to give you how that result might impact the way we look at things. Because again, as Carol and Melissa said, we're not asking for any per se absolutes tonight. Really, just thoughts. But that's about it, just a perspective. I alluded to the real and personal public service corporation. And what you can see here is that basically those taxes overwhelmingly coming from the Surrey plant are basically almost half of the total governmental revenues in any given at 44%, 45%, 46%. So again, that's something that we know is direct. And of course, it has some of the spin-offs. All that said, let's turn for a moment to another concept. And that is what we call your unassigned fund balance for the general fund. That's a nice way of saying your rainy day fund. It's the dollars that are there that are not dedicated for anything specific. And you can see there that you basically have about 10 and a half million at the end of FY '19, about a year ago. And that translates, if you go to the far right, basically to about 34% of your overall governmental revenues. So it's a good number, a solid number, and something that we'd like to see you maintain, if not enhance, down the road. Because again, that whole concept of one particular entity is such a big drive. Okay. So go to the next page. The way we call the rating agencies, and you're not rated, but if you were, we think the county would be a very solid credit rating. It would be a strong credit rating. Because in part, we look at not only that green line of unassigned, but also some other dollars that you have, we call it committed. And you put those two together and you basically have effectively about 67% of dollars available relative to a total budget. And that's another good, good result. But we also want to say, you know what? That's helpful, it's strong. We even want to see you get better than that. Because in a few moments, you know that you've got a fair amount of capital that's going to need to be funded based upon your CIP that y'all approved recently. So again, we're working with decisions that you have made as a board. And we see, again, you're in a good mode, very solid mode. Want to make sure that's sustainable. We also want to see what happens with the end of fiscal year 20, given again, some of the uncertainty. So there, if you go to page 19, your physical dollars unassigned is about that 10 and a half, is a percentage on the right-hand side. And that's really very important. It's a very, very strong number. But again, if we look at you, we look at people like Charles City, we look at people like Wise County, S A people, meaning local governments, we want them to be there at that level because, again, their reliance is particularly heavy. Again, you're in and starting from a good position. And I hope everyone recognizes that. Next page, I think it's another looking at it by the Moody's, one of the three rating agencies. And as you'd expect, they again, look at you very favorably. They think you shake out very solidly, particularly on the right-hand side of things. So all of that, a position of strength. So let's talk about your debt profile. Kyle, why don't you maybe go on this next couple of pages and I'll be quiet again?
Yeah, and so looking up here in terms of talking about the debt profile, we talked about finances and fund balance. We start putting these different pieces together. Make a couple of observations here and then we'll show you a couple kind of graphics to hone in on those. But as we looked at the various ratios that everything mattered and we think you should think about, Mr. Chairman, in terms of maybe some financial policies. Your debt to assessed value is one of those ratios. As it stands right now, you're on the lower side, very much in line with responsibly-run local governments in Virginia. Your debt service to expenditures, which is that bullet point in the middle of the page, basically a measurement of how many pennies, dollar of your budget goes to make a debt service payment. We look at that visually in a couple of pages, but it also is on the lower side of things. And so tells us again that the county's been well-run and responsibly-run historically. Last bullet point there at the bottom, what we'd like to think about with your blessing and with Melissa and Carol, do some planning for you, the first stages of which we'll see towards getting some booklets. And so we'll talk some more about that. But as we flip the page, just to give you a visual of the county's outstanding debt, here on page 23, there's about 19 million, I'm rounding up a little bit, called about $20 million of outstanding debt. That really is just divided up between three specific bond issues for schools and general government projects. And it's always important to note that when the county's doing borrowings, what you're really doing is borrowing for capital projects as opposed to operations. If we flip the page to page 24, and this is simply showing you the same basic information just broken up between principal and interest. One of the things we're going to talk about here in a couple of pages is given how low interest rates are right now in the credit markets, an opportunity to make that interest column lower and more favorable for you from a budget perspective. So we'll get to that. But for the moment, you see how that breaks out.
Let me add a couple of points, if I could. And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your debt service there is about a little over $2 million over the next seven years. And one of the things we're going to talk about is potentially refinancing some of that just to lower those payments over that period of time. That's what the hope is, what Kyle's alluding to. But at the same time, on page 25, we have what's called a payout ratio. That's a nice way of saying, how fast do you pay your debt off? So let me give you a perspective. You have a 71% payout ratio, meaning in 10 years from now, the way you're going, 71% of all that outstanding debt, that 20 million, will be retired. Just to give you a sense, if you're fortunate to own a home and if your mortgage, let's say, is at $100,000, typically if you are like me and others, you have a 30-year mortgage, when I had one, 30-year mortgage, after 10 years, you basically have about 25% of your principal paid off. So you are basically three times above that. You'd like to see that. And you'll notice here, that's very much in line with very strong, highly-rated counties, both in Virginia and throughout the country. So you're in a good mode, that's important. It helps you move into the future of what's going to be probably some significant capital needs. All right, let's go on to debt to assessed value. We are going to talk about some policies down the road with your blessing, working with Melissa and with Carol. But right now, your debt to assessed value is basically the equivalent of very strong, the highest you could be for Moody's, which means you're essentially the equivalent of a AAA on this metric. That won't stay that way, but it'll still stay within a very strong level, which is very solid, given what you're looking at in terms of your approved capital. So the next page, similarly, Kyle alluded to, debt service to expenditures, fancy way of saying, how big's a credit card? We think about it, you basically, we like to see local governments stay about 10 to 12 cents or 10 to 12% of their overall budget, not getting greater than that. Typically, if it's your own personal mortgage, they like to see it stay about 25% to 28% of your overall annual revenues. For you here, or monthly revenues, I should say. Here, again, you're at 7%. So you're in a position of strength going forward. And what we're hoping for is by potentially refunding to save money, shaving that 7% a little bit over the next several years to make it even more favorable. And that also gets you the highest possible credit rating levels by, in this case, Standard and Poor's. It shows it, that's the other big credit rating agency. So refunding opportunity, refinancing is one and the same. Just wanted you to see, we have monitored your portfolio. And basically, you've got a 2014 issue done through the Virginia Resource Authority, which incidentally, we represent as well. And you have about, a little under, just shade under 12 million of principal outstanding at a 4.6% interest rate. We think that we can, if with your blessing, get that down considerably and simply save interest. We're not talking about extending that final maturity at all, which is 2034. We're simply talking about shaving the dollars to 2034. Mr. Chairman, if I could, any questions for the moment? I know I'm moving very quickly, but I want to see if anyone from the board or Melissa or Carol, or anything we've said that maybe is confusing or things you'd like to clarify for us. Okay. Seems like we're okay, Melissa, then? I'll keep going? Okay. You're on mute. We're okay? Okay, thank you. All right, and the next couple of pages?
Very informative. I just got off, very informative. I thank you so much. I'm sure it has helped me to look at our finances. It's done the same thing for our fellow board members. I don't have any questions at this time. I'd like to hear that we're in solid shape and running well. If there are any other board members have anything, please feel free to ask at this time.
I miss the chair in the phones.
I won't be much, okay? We won't be much longer, maybe another five, seven minutes, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman? Is that work?
That is fine, I appreciate this, thank you, sir.
Okay. Just the old picture's worth a thousand words. And this is just the fact that interest rates have just continued to come down. And that's what you see. Okay, next page. The refunding opportunity, here's the important thing. If we can effect this, we believe that we can go from that 4.6% range to something at 2% or better. And that would be fixed. There'd be no interest rate risk. That's important. We'd lock it in the entire time. That would be equal to about one penny, cutting, if you would, about one penny worth of benefit for the capital program. And I'll explain that in a minute, okay? So here's our thoughts. Yes? Okay. Next page, if you would? Okay. So we keep saying that you're in good shape. We think that your balances are solid. We also know that you want to increase the focus on economic development. One example of that, we are very much cognizant of the Spring Grove Solar Project and how successful that has been recently in terms of what is happening. The goal is to have more of those types of successes. So here's our recommendation preliminarily. No action tonight by any means, just a thinking of this. And that is to consider establishing a budget and revenue stabilization fund separate and apart from the unassigned fund balance. And so you'll end up having not one fund balance, but effectively you're going to have a dual, unassigned and a budget revenue stabilization, particularly for times like now with COVID. And hopefully, we never see this again. But when something happens, you're going to have those dollars without having to hit the unassigned fund balance. And part of that has to do with the psychological and the cash flow of the county. There's some other reasons, which we won't belabor tonight, okay? Next. And then, here are some of the specific recommendations. We'd like to suggest that if we combine some of your committed dollars and your unassigned, but reorient some of those committed dollars. We would like to free those up, if you would, establish an unassigned fund balance at 25%. But then, take some of those excess dollars that are committed and move it to and create effectively over the next five to 10 years, the equivalent of 100% of a year's real and public service corporation taxes. That's about 13 and a half million dollars. So we are, in effect, looking at today, we'd be about 3 and 1/2 million dollars short. But with some strategy, and this is something that we'd like you to think about between now and effectively next budget cycle, which will be here before we know it. If the county were to consider, and I know this is easy for me to say because I'm not elected, but if the county were to consider the equivalent some way of about five pennies, we could see you accomplishing a variety of things. That would be, number one, be able to incorporate your capital program that you've identified, be able to then fund that revenue stabilization fund, and you'd be able to do all of that at roughly the equivalent of five pennies over time. And so if you did all of that, okay, you would then be in a mode to accomplish a more sustainability, involve your capital planning so that you actually can fund that. Because remember, your debt service is pretty level for the next seven or eight years. And that way, you can do all of that as you so desire without pushing debt out, without doing it. So again, hopefully, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we just wanted you to start thinking about this. And then if you, next page, this is almost done. This isn't scheduled. What we were talking about was getting blessing of the board inevitably to be able to do two things. One, to take that VRA loan and ask VRA that they're up in financing this fall to refund that purely to save money. We'd like to put in an application, it's not binding. It would begin in the next couple of days. And then secondly, we would also like to say to the board, we would be thinking about being in the fall, or that new money that has been identified. You can always change your mind. You can pull out of that. And you have until basically September 25th. So you have, the idea here is to have us give you some updates at next board meeting, which is September 3rd, as we understand. Then be in a mode, again, we can decide towards the end of the month, or you can, what you may want to do or not do. And that's our thinking. Because again, the sale date is on or about October 28th. That's really all, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm sorry we're not there. We hope to see you someday in person. As my grandmother said, "Good Lord willing, the creek don't rot." We will see you in person. But for that, we answer some questions. I appreciate it, Melissa, I'll see you there. I'll be quiet.
Thank you, sir, for that thorough presentation. Sure, again, it's given myself as well as board members some insight as to where we are physically, financially. And I don't know if any board members have any questions. They can feel free to do so at this time. I trust that Ms. Rollins and our financial team will give us some guidance and direction based upon this presentation on tonight. Any other board members would like to have any comments on this? Please feel free. Any other board members would like to have any comments on this please feel free.
Mr. Chairman oh I'm sorry doesn't matter.
Please go ahead Ms. Little.
Oh okay thank you. I would think that um I don't know based on what he just said when the decision to make a um you know change our um situation so we'll pay a lower interest rate I think is perfect I'm glad to hear that we can do that and um of course being on the board the period of time that I have I knew that we were in good financial condition but it's always good to be reminded that we are and um I appreciate Davenport I um and what they have worked up for us and I think we need to take some other things into account if we can and if our taxpayers can uh weather a five cents tax increase so those are my thoughts.
Thank you Ms. Holmes Mr. Calhoun.
Kind of tagging on to Ms. Little's comment on page thirty-four regarding item number three the uh one-time five cents tax increase that that's just for that one year is that what I'm hearing you say gentlemen?
So what yeah yeah yes sir um so the idea is to have it go from like you went from seventy-three pennies down to seventy-one we would anticipate the equivalent um going from seventy-one up to seventy-six um interestingly enough that would put you right there on par with uh Charles City County um which as you know um has some similarities to you as well um and so that is our thinking very preliminarily and that's the key word here um and it's the type of thing that we'd like to start a dialogue over that would last for what is basically the next six or seven months or if not a little longer thinking is as you then get into earnest with the twenty-two fiscal year budget uh which would occur again like we say maybe six seven months from now.
Right but again I just wanna it get get confirmation that that five cent increase would be just for one year and then if if the plan goes as as we we would like to expect it would drop back down to seventy-one cents the following fiscal year.
Now unfortunately we see it being there for several years several years it would really depend um on how FY twenty ends see what type of revenue results versus expenditures that's gonna be important it's also gonna depend upon what type of growth uh we have uh as well as some other economic development that again if we can continue to get some of those things that you have that recent success um then we're going to be able to sooner rather than later move down from what would be that nickel uh so uh I I'm loathe to to say that it would it would happen in one year don't see that no unfortunately.
Okay thank you very much I just wanted confirmation and make sure I understood.
Thank you Ms. Calhoun. Any others? Yes Ms. Ms. Rollins.
Yes uh unless uh any other board members um have anything else to add I I do want to just add one thing um I just wanted a quick opportunity to um uh thank Ms. Rose and Lox for the presentation this evening as you all aware we we did present um some list of recommendations in the 2021 VIP and um we thought that it was prudent for us to bring this presentation to you this evening in light of having to make a determination are we going to cover those things finance wise I do want to remind the board and I know you all are very aware of this but I do also think it's important um if you recall in the budget presentation that we did fiscal responsibility of course is listed as one of the core values and the objectives of the board and it states to continue to balance quality of government services with fiscal responsibility solidify tax dollars with services needed and desired for a wholesome quality of life and delivery of quality services to the citizens and can continue to develop communication tools on fiscal matters and to continue practices that ensures strong financial management so in their presentation they mentioned several areas in which the county would have to come back to the board and make some recommendations as to how we want to deal with our financial policies I know in previous years um that there has been discussion and board needing to understand the position of the county and I think this presentation evening does like one of the county fiscal uh fiscal uh position these are lots to consume in one evening um and these presentations typically um are at this length so um I'm hopefully the board didn't mind that this evening but I just wanted to add that this evening and so again Davenport team for being on this evening.
Thank you Ms. Rollins thank you gentlemen for the thorough presentation really appreciated thank you for looking out for Suri County thank you so much.
Thank you all thank you.
Thank you we appreciate it.
Be safe.
Have a good night.
Thank you next item on the agenda is our public hearing uh on uh CUP twenty twenty dash zero three the Heart B and B.
Good evening Mr. Chairman and members of the board it's William Saunders uh you are correct we have conditional use permit case twenty twenty dash three tonight uh applicant and owner's name are Tina and Paul Hart of fifty-five forty-eight Brixton Road Williamsburg Virginia property located uh it's parcel twenty-seven dash thirty-three C that's one 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 three three Rolf Highway Elbraon Virginia this is approximately one half mile south of Old Borough Road on Route thirty-one currently zoned agricultural rural the current use is residential surrounding land uses and zoning are agricultural rural and residential as well Tina and Paul Hart have applied for a conditional use permit to allow for bed and breakfast establishment on the aforementioned property the applicants propose a maximum number of six guest rooms to accommodate a maximum number of eighteen guests like can accommodate up to ten parking spaces and ADA parking space and ADA ramp are included in their plans screening and buffering per the ordinance are proposed with a four-foot fence and evergreen shrubs adjacent to the home next door uh and you can see that illustrated in exhibit exhibit in your packet. Planning staff recommends no conditions in addition to the applicants meeting the supplemental regulations for bed and breakfast establishments and the buffer yard screening and landscaping requirements as shown in that exhibit at their June twenty-second twenty twenty meeting the planning commission recommended approval of this application to the board of supervisors with no conditions also in your staff report in your packet you'll find some relevant sections of of the ordinance that relate to this type of application I would also call your attention uh to a table of impacts that relate to the this type of use and things that should be considered with this type of use and none of these uh exhibit any concern for staff uh based on what they propose and at the scale that they propose it you'll find in your packet a business plan uh as well as a map and a plat of the property uh in your packet. Planning staff have identified the following strengths and weaknesses of the application strengths subject parcels adjacent to a major through fare a commercial enterprise here may increase the county's tax base no weaknesses were identified staff at this time and as you mentioned Mr. Chairman this is a public hearing but I do believe that applicants are in on the meeting if they would like to give a presentation or say any words uh prior to the opening of the public hearing.
Yes Mr. Chair and um board members we uh would like to ask for you to consider our desire to provide a bed and breakfast which would um meet a need that we see in Suri County for accommodations for families that might be visiting in our area and I believe you have a copy of our business plan that has our mission and our goals uh as laid out in the plan and our our goal is to also spotlight some of our local businesses and the uh various things that we have to offer in Suri County thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. At this time we will now open up our public hearing to members of the public if you are on the virtual call about by uh via telephone please feel free to state your name the district and your concern.
Mike Eggleston I think it's a good idea it increases Suri County taxpayer base thank you.
Thank you Mr. Eggleston. There be another?
Mr. Chairman this is William Saunders again we did receive a letter um from a um member of the citizenry that would like to make a a statement on this application I'd like to read that into as a public comment.
Yes go right ahead Mr. Saunders.
Dear Board Super Board of Supervisors as Suri residents we would like to express our wholehearted support of Paul and Tina Hart's endeavor to establish a bed and breakfast here in Suri without a doubt Whispering Pines Bed and Breakfast would fill a void that we currently have in Suri by offering a multipurpose venue that showcases our beautiful rural area the Harts have shown great attention to detail in their planning and execution of their mission statement we cannot think of a better way to pull together all that Suri has to offer to visitors while helping support locally owned businesses in addition to the fact that Paul and Tina have formed a very solid business plan we know from personal experience the integrity that this family brings to this project and upholds in all areas of their family life as neighbors to the proposed Whispering Pines Bed and Breakfast we ask that the Suri County Board of Supervisors support the Harts' request for establishing their bed and breakfast at one 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 three three Rolf Highway in Elbraon Virginia and this is respectfully signed Bob and Catherine Oliver of one one seven four three Rolf Highway Suri Virginia.
Thank you Mr. Saunders.
Yes.
Are there any other uh thank you sir are there any other uh comments from the public? If not we will close the public hearing at this time uh fellow board members you have this matter before us is there a motion on the table for consideration?
Mr. Chairman this is Tim Calhoun I'll make a motion to uh I guess to approve or vote and have vote on the um um the the Heart B and B please.
We have a motion on the floor for the approval of CUP twenty twenty dash zero three for the Heart B and B breakfast can we get a second?
Second.
It has been probably moved in second uh by Mr. Drury for the approval of of the the Heart B and B uh is there any additional discussion on this matter? There be no additional discussion Ms. Chapman can we have a roll call vote please?
Yes sir we'll call Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried we look forward to a successful business with uh the Heart B and B here in Suri County thank you very much uh at this time it is our position for our public comments and as always we'd like the public to know that if tuned in that your comments that you send in they are received by the board members and we thank you so much for taking time out to share your concerns with us as a board as we continue uh to strive to move Suri County forward they are not going unnoticed they are being forwarded to us by our uh clergy staff clerical staff of the county so thank you very much for your public comments do we have any comments at this time from our fellow board members before we turn over to our county administrative report?
Yes Ms. Calhoun. I'm sorry I'd just like to make a a concern that I have regarding the public comment um again um in this agenda and to the best of my knowledge we haven't received any public comments uh or any communications from the public um regarding concerns and issues knowing that we are not meeting of course in public um I feel that we have the public is not wanting to send the comments in because all they are is is sent to us via emails and in the agendas I would still like to try to reopen this and bring a a better transparency uh from the public to the board that we reconsider reading these public comments um in these board mem board meetings since they're virtual that way those on the telephone can hear them you know a lot of folks in Suri do not have internet and cannot uh have access to those through the webpages I I just feel like we're kind of doing a slip slide and uh providing you know our services to the county and being transparent and open communication on these uh comments nobody's sending them in and nobody's able to hear them as they can in person I just like maybe that we reconsidered this in future virtual meetings that uh as as we receive them read them uh you know read them out loud in the meetings.
Thank you Mr. Calhoun for your concern and we will definitely take that into consideration uh we were trying to since we are virtual trying to be able to expedite without sliding any uh concerns from the public we trying to just put forth the best virtual meeting that we possibly can and I thank you for your input and we will definitely take that into consideration thank you sir.
Thank you.
We will definitely be talking with staff on this we'll talk with staff and see what we can do. Any other board members? If not uh I would like to speak now on our upcoming public hearing on the the monument of the statues in Suri County uh we will be meeting again on next Thursday for the public hearing on this matter and we are asking that anyone that wants to uh speak at this public hearing to go on our website and put in a notice that they will like to speak we want to be able to have a list of all that will be in this public here we know that this is a hot button issue in the county and we don't want anyone to be slighted we want to be able to hear from the public on this matter if you would go on the website and and let it be known that you would like to speak on this matter we will get a list of those who plan on uh presenting on that night we do we will have a dedicated line that Mr. Brown will be providing it will be up on the website where they can uh possibly call in where they will be able to speak on the virtual meeting and after everyone has signed up we will again open it up after those who have signed up to anyone that would like to speak at our public hearing in regards to uh the future of the statue at the Confederate statue at in front of the courthouse so that is the format that we will be using on next week we're asking that uh participants that plan on speaking to please sign up so we can govern how we'll be handling this situation we're looking to have uh we cannot limit it to anybody as far as countywide but we can look at the number of participants can look at the number of participants and have a timeline as to how long they will be able to speak. So if anybody wants to speak, get the word out. It will be up on our website for where they can, uh, give their name and which they will, uh, like to speak on our public hearing on next week. Are there any questions on the board, from board members on this, on how we will be conducting our public hearing next week? If there are no questions from board members, we will now turn the meeting over to, uh, county administrator for, uh, county administrator's report.
Yes, I'm getting ready again, and I'm going to be very busy this evening due to the late hour. Um, you do have a copy of the county administrator's report, and I make sure that staff posts online for the public. Um, so I am going to just jump right into, um, some of the, the more, I can see pertinent issues tonight that I want to share. And I'm going to start off by, um, basically talking about, uh, and some employee spotlights, and I think I'll focus on that this evening and just reserve the other comments for, um, folks to, to look at at their leisure. Um, I wanted to say that we have, uh, a exceptional animal control, um, team in Sherry County. Uh, one of the things that I had indicated in the report, um, was the fact that, um, officers Argo and Mosley, in addition to, um, Ms. Emily Matthews, who serves as a shelter attendant, was able to secure for Surrey County a $4,000 grant, uh, from the Friends of Virginia Beach to build a chain link sho, uh, fence around the perimeters of, of some of the property at the Alma Shelter. And how they was able to do that, um, they was able to do that based on their love and care for animals in this community. Um, they had saved a, a male dog, um, that was living on the street. Um, the Friends of Virginia Beach got a hold of their story, and since they did, um, they will start contributing resources to the Surrey County Shelter, which resulted in a very nice space where, um, citizens or others looking to adopt animals in Surrey County will have a, a, a play space where they can go and entertain with the animals prior to adoption. So I just want to give a, a kudos out to the Surrey County Animal Control Officers and staff on this evening. And I feel that to, to also say that, um, congratulations are in order for Ms. Lisa Mosley, um, who will be leaving us as one of the animal control officers, and she's going to be the lead officer in Sussex County. Um, Lisa has been with the county for about 15 months, has done an outstanding job. The most notable accomplishment is the newly revised high standard of operations at the Alma Shelter. So if you had opportunity to go in, and you can see exactly what I'm talking about. She is truly dedicated to her profession, and even though that she's leaving us in Sherry, she's leaving us for a better opportunity in Sussex, and we certainly wish her well in her next endeavor in Surrey County. Uh, so I want to take the opportunity to mention that on this evening. The next item I want to mention, um, Mr. Elliott and board members, is, um, a bittersweet announcement, um, of the resignation of Mr. William Saunders, who is our Surrey County Director of Planning and Community Development, who's also resigning from Surrey County to take on a new and exciting opportunity. Um, he will be joining the ranks of local government leaders as the new town manager for the town of Windsor. So again, bittersweet, but we still excited for this opportunity, um, that he's getting. During the 15 months that Mr. Saunders has been with the county, he has done an outstanding job, has provided exemplary customer service and support to the Planning Commission, to the VZA, to citizens and state officers. He has learned so much about Surrey County this short time he's been here. In a day with sole farm inquiries, applications, um, he first got started, he successfully closed out the county's largest sole farm project to date. A huge undertaking from the most, he has worked to complete the county's company plan just about. He has been a tremendous asset to Team Sherry, and his dedication, support, professionalism, and expert knowledge in the field of planning and development will be missed in the operation of Sherry County. He has been a great resource to myself since I've been here. And again, I want to, um, take the time for the board to, um, congratulate him and also Ms. Mosley on their new endeavors.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for, uh, the update on Ms. Mosley and Mr. Sanders. We do congratulate them. Uh, we thank them for the service that they have given Sherry County. Uh, I have been on, uh, the board since January, and I can say with certainty that Mr. Sanders has, uh, given expert, an expertise service to Sherry County in the position that he has held. We sorry that we're going to lose such great employees, but we know that we will have a friend in Windsor. So we thank God, uh, for, uh, the, the relationship that has been established, and we wish, uh, Mr. Sanders and Ms. Mosley nothing but the best, and we, we ask that God will bless them as they continue to serve citizens of this great state. Thank you. Job well done.
Yeah, I didn't want to put Mr. Saunders on the, on the spot, and I know Ms. Mosley is not in the, excuse me, but Ms. Saunders, if he, if he wanted to say something, Mr. Elliott, if that's okay.
There will be more than okay.
For the very kind words, and I will say that, um, Surrey's been very good to me in the 15 months that I've been there. Learned a lot, and I've enjoyed getting to know you all as I've worked with you. Um, I think that Surrey is on the edge of, of some big things, and I was glad to be a part of some of the big things that I think are going to pave the way for that in the time that I was there. Um, and I, I'll always have a soft spot for Surrey after serving there as I have, and uh, I will all the best as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any other board members?
Um, Mr. Chairman, this is Judy Little. I have worked with Mr. Saunders since he's been here, only, uh, represents the board on the Planning Commission. And, uh, Mr. Saunders, you didn't tell me you were going to leave. We've enjoyed working with you. We appreciate your service, and you've done a good job for Surrey County, and you know we, I certainly hate to see you go, but I wish you the best, and I know that you will be good wherever you go. So God bless you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Sanders, uh, this is Tim Calhoun. I've just been on the board since January and have worked with you, uh, in just a very little capacity, but I appreciate your professionalism, um, and we sure are going to miss you, and I wish you best in your new endeavor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service, uh, both of you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Rollins, may continue.
Okay, yes, I, uh, unless there are some other comments from other members of the board, um, the, the next item that would need the board to act on this evening is relates to, um, Mr. Sanders, um, um, leaving and the fact that by state code, we are required to have a zoning administrator. And I am, uh, pleased to announce, um, that we have a zoning administrator who's willing to step up and has served in this role, uh, before, and that is going to be Mr. David Harrison. Um, everyone knows that David started his career out in planning and community development, and he actually served as the interim, uh, community development, um, director, um, underneath Mr. Warner. David took on the, um, zoning administrator in Alma role back in February of 2019, and he stayed in that role for four months until Mr. Sanders came on board, and also stayed an extra two months or so to get Mr. Sanders acclimated to the position in their county. Um, so if it's the will of the board, I believe that is something that you may need to make a motion on, and that is to, um, have, um, the designated, um, zoning administrator as Mr. Ha, as Mr. Harrison, if it's the will of the board. And, um, also adding to that is the recommendation from myself to have him serve as the interim, um, director of planning and development until such time to get the opportunity to look at that organization and look at their role of bringing back, um, a more permanent position that departs.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Uh, fellow board members, you heard the recommendation from our county administrator, uh, to, uh, put a place Mr. Harrison, Mr. David Harrison, in an interim position as the zoning administrator and the director of planning. Uh, is there a motion that we can put on the table for consideration at this time?
Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Little.
No, I think someone else was speaking.
Yeah, ma'am, I think Mr. Holmes, Mr. Holmes, I think he's going to second your motion.
Oh, okay. Well, I would move, um, that we would appoint in Mr. Harrison as our interim planning director until at such time we make other arrangements.
And finally, a motion. Confirmation that it should also be as the zoning administrator.
Yes, director, planet, director, planning and zoning administrator.
Yeah. amend my motion to both the planning and the zoning administrator.
And I second the motion.
It has been properly moved as second. If there are no further questions, Ms. Chapman, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you, uh, Ms. Rollins, you may continue.
Yes, sir. And again, thank you, Mr. Harrison, um, publicly for, um, stepping up to the plate to take on, um, that role once again, sir. Um, I appreciate you, and I just, we do a good job as we care on the Alma role. Um, the next item we want to bring to the board supervisors' attention this evening is a topic that has been on the forefront of agendas and thought processes since we have been into this conversation. That is the discussion of hazard pay. Um, this is something that we have been looking at for quite a while, not just Sherry County, but again, all over the state, and I'm sure in other states as well. Um, and it pertains to employees who are considered to be essential employees. Uh, while non-physical states employees have continued operations, team members that we do classify as essential workers have work to either respond to or mitigate the risk of COVID-19 in the workplace. The essential workers are considered to be our public work employees, and those include our solid waste attendants and employees, our maintenance department employees, and our public safety employees include animal control, our deputies, and our emergency 911 communication dispatchers. In addition, social services employees have been deemed essential by the state as the responses to the pandemic, and therefore included in the recommendation that we make this evening. I do want to provide the board with information as pertains to, um, a recommendation, and it is to, um, allow the use of CARES Act funding, um, as is, as hazard pay is one of the eligible expenses for the CARES Act funding, and we indicated in the earlier document as far as using it for, as we need to pay for employees as an eligible expense. Um, the amount based on the, uh, bonus pay that we provide to those employees is an amount of $164,000. Um, it does not include any, um, any directors or, um, or the county administrator or any, um, department here positions, but only those workers who have been, um, assisting with the mitigation, um, and the response to the, um, pandemic as essential workers. Um, and if it's a pleasure of the board, I would like to have your consensus this evening as, as the eligible use of the CARES Act funding. Um, but before you do that, is that I did mention that group of employees, and all of them do deserve, um, the, the recommendation that I'm bringing forth, but I do want to bring extra attention to one group of employees, and I think I have said this before. Our solid waste collection site attendants, the average age, from what I understand, is over 60 years old, and those attendants wanted to stay the course, and they wanted to be able to work and assist residents during this particular time. So if it's a pleasure of the board, I would just like to give them a virtual applause, um, again, for them staying the course while they are working as vulnerable to the population, um, and working to, uh, maintain the course while we are working through this pandemic. That is my recommendation this evening, and, um, I will, um, await your consensus, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, and we do, uh, applaud and thank our frontline essential workers for being steadfast during this, uh, pandemic. Uh, are there any questions from, uh, the board members in regards to this recommendation to, uh, give them this hazard pay? Are there any questions for Ms. Rollins on this matter? If there be no questions, could we have a motion on the table for consideration?
Mr. Chair, hello, my jury.
Okay.
We have a motion, uh, for Mr. Drury to, uh, give the frontline workers, uh, this hazard pay. We have a second?
I can, Judy Little.
It has been properly moved as second. Are there any, uh, any further discussion on this matter? If not, Ms. Chapman, can we give a roll call vote to use CARES fund, the CARES funding to give our, uh, frontline essential workers a bonus?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Rollins, back in your court.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Vice Chairman, Jury, and members of the board, and I can certainly hope to speak on behalf of these employees that also be working here. So thank you for your consensus in that matter. Um, the only other thing I would mention this evening is on August the 11th, which is next Tuesday, uh, we will be having the greatest food ceremony as recognition of the city's rivers designated. This is being planned by the Surrey County Economic Development Office, uh, Surrey Seaford and Golden Inn Resort Office. That is going to be placed at 10 o'clock AM on next Tuesday at the Marina, uh, due to social gatherings and distance required, miss, it is by invitation only, um, so there will be limiting them of people, but we just wanted to make the board aware of that activity. Um, and that is all I want to report this evening, and thank you all for your consent.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for your report. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns from board members at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like.
Yes, Ms. Little, yes, Ms. Little.
I just would like to share that, um, Ms. Sharon Scott, who used to work in the sheriff's department and worked there for, I guess, up to maybe 30 years, I'm not sure, but anyway, she passed away. She's in my district, but she served this county for quite a while as the secretary, um, for the sheriff's in the county, and her funeral is tomorrow at 11:00 or somewhere around that time. Just wanted to share that. Those who knew her or.
Thank you, Ms. Little, for that information, and we pray, we pray the strength of the family during this difficult time.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Rollins.
If it is desire of yourself and the board for a update from Mr. Phelps on, uh, COVID-19 situation, um, I, I was intent to go to him before I did my, what I do apologize.
No problem at all. Yes, Mr. Phelps, uh, floor is yours. Are you there, Mr. Phelps?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, good evening, Chairman of the Board, uh, board members, Ms. Rollins, this is the Surrey County. Um, Surrey County Emergency Management would like to take, uh, take this time to provide you with a quick update on the events, uh, that pertain to emergency management. Um, COVID-19, our, our numbers continue to climb in Surrey County. Um, there's no real concentration of the virus that spread throughout the county. Currently, our numbers are at 44 positive cases with two deaths. On July 30th, we partnered with Trader Health to off testing for, uh, COVID-19 at the Surrey Village Apartments, and we had roughly 20 citizens protested. Uh, I do not have the results back on, on if any of those tested positive as of yet. We will have additional testing, uh, this month as well as in September, but no date has been set as of yet. Uh, the governor announced this week that Indian National Army Guard. announced this week that Indian National Army Guard may be standing back up to provide additional testings in localities since the numbers are climbing at a higher rate. We will begin to distribute COVID-19 tool kits next week. These kits will include PE to aid in the prevention of the spread of the virus. We're also asking that our citizens continue to wear masks when in public settings and practice social distancing as much as possible. Our numbers are climbing a lot higher than they, are at a much higher rate than what they were when we, when the virus first started. This past Tuesday, Surrey County was impacted by the storm Isaiah. Emergency management stood up a virtual EOC with a scheduled staff and monitored, monitored storms throughout the night. Did send out a series of tornado warnings through the early morning, the first being for the entire county, and then the other two were concentrated, one in Claremont area and one down in the Moonlight area. There was no report of tornado actually hitting, but there was a rotation, a rotation that hit pretty prominent that it could. We had several downed trees, power lines, power outage throughout the county, but most of it concentrated in the Brenton's View area, and no significant damage was reported. One of the things I'd like to take this opportunity to do is, is ask citizens of Surrey County, if you do see an emergency one of these storms, to contact the emergency management. The reason being, I do go out to windmill stations throughout the county, but it's hard for us to have the ability to hit all streets and plumb moons. So if somebody does experience any damage, we would like them to, to contact us. And last, in the month of July, there, Surrey County Emergency Services teamed up with local volunteers to install two buoys at Dillard's Wharf. The Dillard's Wharf is a, is located between Claremont and the Scott and Ferry, and at Dillard's Wharf, there roughly has 600-foot dilapidated pier that sits from the shore, and we've had several boating accidents over the years out there. And so we, we saw a need to be able to mark this hazard with the increased boating picture, Surrey seafood into the Marina, and it took us about months to, or more to, to make the, to jump through all the hoops and get the permits from Army Corps of Engineer, Coast Guard, everybody like that to make this happen. But with, with help of Barton Peggy Seward and Don and P. Padgett, we were able to complete the project and, and get the buoy set out there. So that is now marked, and hopefully that'll help eliminate any future accidents out there. But other than that, that's all we have for emergency management. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, for that update, and I want to personally thank you, I'm sure, the board as well. Thank you for the service you gave the county during this last hurricane threat with Isaiah. So thank you very much for keeping the citizens of Surrey County safe, and I would like to reiterate your comments on this COVID-19. The cases are going up in the county. Also, we need to make sure we keep this in the forefront and that we know that it's a serious situation. The cases are going up. We, we're so grateful. We only have two deaths, but we have 44 cases in the county now that have been reported. So let us be mindful that this thing is very real, and let us take the necessary precautions to stay as safe as possible. Are there any other comments from board members? If there be no other comments, the chair will entertain a motion to come forth for adjournment until August the 13th for a public hearing at 7:00 p.m.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, Tim Calhoun.
If stuck?
Mike Curry, second.
It has been, it has been properly moved and seconded, that we will adjourn until August 13th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. Roll call vote, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yeah.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Motion is carried. See you all on the 13th. God bless and stay safe.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Could you announce real quick that our facilities will be closing early tomorrow due to AC concerns? We'll be here from 9:00 to noon until the technician can get out and repair our AC.
You just did. All right. Thank you very much.
All right.
God bless. Rest of the evening. All right.
Yeah. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.